Is that right, Jody? I mean, we've got me, Bob, Doral, Carrie. We should be good. So let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the city council meeting for the city of Woodland Hills, April 27, 2001. Here in attendance via Zoom are Doral Kinniston, Carrie Malkovich, Paul MacArthur, and then at the location is Bob Ottley. The mayor is not going to be with us tonight. She might join late. She's got a family issue that she's dealing with there, and Councilman Pratt, Dave Pratt, is traveling and not available. He's going to try to join, but it's unlikely he'll be able to. He sent an email earlier with some comments that we can incorporate into the record as those topics come up. So let's see. Let's just jump right in. The first issue, motorized vehicles on switchback trails. Actually, Jody, do we do? I know in the past, we've done public comment at the very beginning to see if anyone has anything they want to say. Do we do? Should we start with that or do incorporate that later?
So public comment is.
There's an echo. Well, let's go ahead and continue with motorized vehicles on switchback. Oh, here we go. Yeah.
Public comment is part of the council meeting and not the work session.
Okay, so we don't do it. Okay. Okay, so let's start talking about motorized vehicles on switchback trails. This is something I think that was it Corbett or Doral? I can't remember now that Wendy, Wendy, the mayor told me that that one of you had some information on this, and then I really want to hear from the Burgers as well.
I'll start this. I think we probably would all agree that right now is not a good time to be running up and down the trail with a motorized vehicle as it will tear it up. So we've talked about that and suggested in past council meetings that we pause on the on those vehicles. And and we need to kind of discuss how to do that if we if we want to pause it. So that's a start, and I'd probably like to hear from Burgers if they have a reason that this is on the agenda.
I'm happy to comment. I didn't know it was going to be on the agenda because of us, but happy to comment. I I think I sent an email to all the council members and the mayor. I don't know, a month or so ago with a proposal, and really it was from PTR. So I shouldn't have signed just my name to it. I'm learning that kind of how to do things, but the proposal was to temporarily continue because we thought they already were prohibited because of the water bars to temporarily continue non-motorized vehicles on the switchbacks until the water bars can be assessed. And also the avalanche. What really happened up there? Jeff and I tried to go up a couple of weeks ago, but because of the snow, we could only get to switchback three to see how deep a crevice it is up there on the DNR property. Because if it is too deep and you can't get a motorized vehicle across it, even though that's DNR land, how would a motorized vehicle turn around between switchback six and switchback seven, which I call the sunny part, where it's all open and exposed and you look down towards the park? The recommendation that we I made was to put a Jersey barrier like we already have up there across the trail by I'm going to call it Toolers where the sign is that says Trail Access. In the past, after mitigation, Jersey barriers up at the top by where the trail sign is by the big dirt pile. But what happens is the motorized vehicles cut across Toolers property and they go up the trail, which is already happening. There have been motorcycles and four-wheelers up there in the last week. So if you place that Jersey barrier or some kind of barrier right there by the Trail Access sign by Toolers property, it then kind of starts to head up and goes towards the cave. There's no way that a motorized vehicle could get around something being placed there, even if they do cut across Toolers property.
Okay. Thank you. So this, this is a proposal that comes from the committee then. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Doral, any comments?
This is Carrie. I'd like to say something, you know, we spent a lot of time and effort on our mitigation projects and we were able to have a lot of great restoration work done to the trail in addition to those water bars. And so I think that that the Park, the Trails Committee has a point there. We don't want all of that. We would never be able to pay to have that done to the extent that it was done on our behalf. And so I think we need to protect it. I am not in favor of totally banning all vehicles. A lot of trails, as we discussed last fall, a lot of trails have a you know, maybe motorized vehicles every other day so that the trail has time to recover in between. But then during times when it's wet and soggy and prone to ruts because of because of the condition of the soil, that they might limit or ban, I wouldn't say the word ban, but not prohibit motorized vehicles when it's all muddy, but you know, then during the summer, every other day or something like that. But I am in favor of us trying to protect that trail as much as possible, but still allow access. I know there's a lot of people who love to go up there and maybe have hiked in the past, but because they're getting older, they do need to use their their ATV or their UTV to get up there and still enjoy our city. And we don't want to, or those who need idiot accommodations, we don't want to detour those people from enjoying recreational opportunities in our city. But we also need to be wise in in the in the maintenance of the trail. So that's my two cents.
Okay, thanks, Carrie. And maybe let me read what David Pratt sent in his email on this issue. He says, I am strongly against eliminating these altogether. We're referring to motorized vehicles, but I also feel that some limits may be reasonable. For instance, several trails limit access by wheelbase width. So ATVs motorcycles would be okay, but cars, trucks would not. The way they limit is by placing metal and plus cement posts at the entrance of the trail. I would not be against this. So fairly short statement there. Doral and Bob, I'd like to hear from you, from both of you on this issue.
I would like us, I would like us to block the trail at certain intervals, intervals such as right now when it would be tore up if if motorized went up there. So perhaps, perhaps it's, I think moving those Jersey barriers is kind of a rigorous task. But I don't know if we have time to put in the the limiting gate or whatever it is there. And it does need to be down there where the trail heads up, not at the big sign at the top, but down to one more sign. To me, that's where the gate needs to be so we could control it. And I would wish that we would control it for a little while and and turned it off because it really would tear it up right now if if too many go up there. It's my two cents.
Thanks, Doral.
I would propose that we call this a seasonal closure. And that it would be closed until we determine that the trail is in a satisfactory condition for motorized vehicles, i.e. mud. There's no significant mud areas. And I think that we need to explore and design a gate or a, not necessarily a gate, but a a barrier of sorts that would limit the size of what could go up there. There are different size of ATVs. Some are less than 60 inches or 50 inches and some are 65. And then, and so that we'd end up with two posts with a third one in the middle where we could then limit motorized vehicles. And that also includes dirt bikes. It's just not ATVs or Honda Pilots that was up weeks ago. But it's, it's dirt bikes. It also can be dangerous. And it's just, just the mud and and the loose dirt. And hopefully over years that will become less of an issue. But for right now, I think we need to have a seasonal, a seasonal, seasonal closure.
Okay, thanks, Bob. So maybe, maybe here are my thoughts and maybe a recommendation. Could we ask the Parks and Trail Committee to research and design a proposal that would address two issues. One is year-round no-no's as far as certain types of vehicles like trucks, SUVs. I think we're all on board with they, they have no business trying to go up the switchbacks. We're going to have major damage, potentially major, you know, injuries, loss of life if they get to the wrong place and roll. We could have put our emergency personnel at significant risk trying to go up and rescue somebody in vehicles up there. So if we say there's certain vehicles that are just always a no, and then maybe design some, some kind of a schedule that says, let's have seasonal closures and then access to others, like, for example, Carrie, with your comment that maybe the the trail needs to rest here and there. So having continuous use by motorized vehicles might wear out really fast where we might say on certain days access. I'm just throwing out the things that have been brought up today. Could we ask the Park and Trails Committee to come and to take that information and come back with some kind of a proposal that we can sink our teeth into? Is that an appropriate way to address this?
Yes, Paul, in fact, I think our, our Trails Committee meeting is scheduled for next Wednesday. And the plan was to meet up there at the trailhead and make these assessments at that time onsite.
Great, great.
Do that.
Paul, can I also ask then that if we are commissioned to get together and to make a proposal that the item that is on for public hearing for the Planning Commission on the 19th of May and the 27th of May with the City Council to amend motorized use on trails for section 11 point, whatever it is, be put off until you receive and review our recommendation?
Yeah, I don't see any problem with that, especially because the mayor does have, the only concern I would have with that is that, you know, to Doral's point, we've, we've got, we've got reasons to restrict access right now. And so if we wait too long, basically the old rule stays in place and we have people up there. But the mayor has the ability to, on a short-term emergency basis, to say, hey, look, too much snow up there, too much water still. We're going to put some restrictions on on use until we get that proposal back from the Parks and Trail Committee. So I think we can handle it that way. But so any thoughts, Bob, Doral, Carrie?
We just need to act this week, in my opinion.
I think we need to close it now. I think as of tonight, it needs to be closed. And whatever the the city crews can do to help identify that, I think it needs to happen. I think if if Carrie can put out communication on a social media saying that it's closed and why it's closed and that world continue to assess the conditions and when it's appropriate.
And we're not talking about closing the trail altogether, just closing for motorized vehicles, just to be clear.
Correct.
Yes.
Is that right, Bob?
Yeah, Bob described it well in the term he used, like seasonal closure. I like that.
Okay.
Mark, what are you suggesting?
Oh, yeah, Chris, go ahead.
Emergency services, whatever we do for Greg, when you guys meet, just make sure we can still get make proposals. We can still get side-by-sides up there, snowmobiles. In the event somebody breaks a knee, busts a hip, something like that, we still need to be able to get access all, all year round.
Perfect. So, yeah. Mark, go ahead.
Hey, Paul, a couple of things. Yeah, you can actually put removal, removable baller out there that will like have a key that the fire department can unlock and just pull it out and have access to it. That would resolve that issue. But the one thing that I've heard discussion is where would you put these, these, these roadblocks? Because if you're putting them on BLM property versus city property, you may need to talk with the BLM and see what they're comfortable with. Otherwise, if we're putting them on city property, it may or may not be an issue.
Good point.
And I agree. That's what I envisioned, Mark, was that, that at least the center, when if not all three would have locks where they could be, they could be removed for for whatever reason. So I think that is the basics of what we wanted to.
Okay, so let me summarize this. On the one hand, we're going to talk to the mayor because the mayor does have the ability to act immediately to restrict access for seasonal closure. With the exception, always being emergency personnel can get up and down. We're talking about seasonal closure to any motorized vehicles. That's what would take place hopefully tonight, tomorrow, whenever she makes that decree. Then the Parks and Trails Committee is being tasked with creating a proposal that would address what types of vehicles are always prohibited. And then what makes sense as far as seasonal and other closures for other types of motorized vehicles? And then thirdly, what kind of a barrier system can be used and where to enforce the, the ordinance? And that's what we're, that's what we're waiting for from them. Is that right? Is there anything we should add or take away from that?
I would say to add to that would maybe be to kind of look at surrounding communities and see what they have in place for their trails. I think Greg probably knows a lot about that since he, he writes books about the trails and some are open and some are closed. And it might be good just to kind of get a you know, a feel for what other, other cities are doing and how they're doing it. And, and just so that we have a little bit of a of a, you know, best practices in place.
Okay, perfect. Anything else? Doral, Bob?
No, I like this. I like the solution here.
Thanks for all the input from the public on this. This is an important issue and it'll be helpful to get that recommendation. So thank you to the Parks and Trails Committee on that. Okay. So if there's nothing else on that issue, let's go to the next, which is parking on Deep Forest Circle. And again, I think that that's kind of, I mean, it's tangentially related to this issue in the sense that that's where people are parking to access the switch, switchbacks. But it goes beyond what we just talked about because this is just regular hikers who, who they go up there and park somewhere to go access the, the, the switchbacks, right? So I, I don't know if Doral, this is you or Corbett or or Chief Northrup, who was going to kind of lead this discussion? It might be, again, I know the Burgers had something on this as well.
And, and, and they did, Paul. I think there has been a very good idea proposed of putting the parking off at the end of Deep Circle pointed in toward the hill. And, and this is a, this has come from a subcommittee of the Parks and Trails Committee and and would be a great solution for parking maybe seven or eight cars right there pointed face in. If we, if we built a little flat area there into that, into that mountain, toward the mountain. Sherry, would you add your, your two cents on that as well?
Yeah, thanks, Doral. I, I sent a video to everyone on the council and to the mayor that kind of describes this. So you'd be able to actually see a visual. But I think this, this helps us or helps the city in in two ways. One, it creates definitive parking. And in the video, if you look at it, we're Doral's talking about the northern portion, portion of the cul-de-saup up there, kind of runs from where the private road or the driveway that exists going up towards Taylors over due east where you could put about seven or eight cars. And the idea that we've come up with is put a split rail fence there with a sign that says parking only head-on or whatever against the fence. So that there's no mistake of where you're supposed to park. Any other vehicles will be towed away at owner's expense. And in a meeting that we had with Corbett, Corbett actually called a towing company and it's okay for the city to give permission for the Burgers or the Taylors or the Brockbanks, the Toolers eventually, anyone that has eyes on that deep forest circle to call the towing company. The city wouldn't have to do anything. There wouldn't be any cameras involved and it would be a way to enforce the parking, keep it where we could see who was parked. Corbett and the subcommittee members have kicked around the idea of parking adjacent to Toolers property when and if the city creates a new road to access the water tank. And in our opinion, that just puts people in the forest. And it gives, I'm going to say kids, particularly kids, a place to hide where nobody can see them. And even if the city had cameras, the response time, as we know in the past from what's happened up at the water tank is delayed and there could be incident up there. So that was, that was our subcommittee's proposal. And all it would involve would be extra signs and the cost of running that fence east to west and contracting with a towing company.
Okay, thank you. Any comments?
These are all things that we can also review on Wednesday night at our Parks, Trails and Recreation Committee meeting onsite.
Okay, excellent. Bob, any thoughts?
No, I think it's it's a good plan and I think we need to explore it and prepare a sketch of what it is that we're talking about and then see about work we need to have to allow us to, to access this from the proper owners.
Okay, thank you. Carrie, I know you're traveling, but anything you'd add?
No, I think that it will be great for us to get a proposal with some drawing. Well, I did talk with Sherry yesterday and, and she kind of told me what they were thinking of. And I do think though that we do, we need to have a better solution to what's going on there. We're not going to be getting less traffic. We're going to be getting more. And so it's, it's important that we put it out there, not only where we're going to park, but to make sure our ordinance is in line for enforcement of those who don't, don't comply with whatever we put in place. So we need, it's kind of got to be twofold there.
Okay, thank you. So my comments on this are much the same. The only thing I would add is we've got some competing interests up there. We've got the privacy of the immediate neighbors. That's why it's so important that we hear from the Burgers because they're representative of that neighborhood. We've got safety issues with our water system being up there. And we've got, you know, city services issues with overuse of the road to get to the water tanks can create some problems for us. And then on the other hand, we've, we've got, at least me personally, I would say this, I, I, I want to be a city known for being inviting. We have beautiful outdoors that we live in. And if people want to come and enjoy the surrounding area, I'd like to be as inviting as we can and, and tell the nature lovers to come and enjoy what we have up here. We're not trying to keep it to ourselves. Then the only other thing I would add is I know that Provo years and years ago, they had a huge problem with tow, tow companies booting vehicles where it wasn't clear where the, those zones were. Was this okay to park it, not okay to park it? It caused a lot of PR issues for Provo. So I would just say, as the Parks and Trails Committee get together, please make it an emphasis that we know, we make it absolutely clear. We have plenty of parking right here. If you don't park here, this is what can or will happen to you. As long as we're super clear about that and make sure that we have enough room for those who want to come enjoy the beauty of our city, then I'd be all for that. And again, I think that the, that the neighbors up there, none of us have to deal with that and so want to be sensitive to that. So those are my comments on that. So with that in mind, Greg and Sherry and, and others, Jeff on the committee and Doral, if you could take that information, those comments and come up with maybe again, it's something that's a firm proposal. Now that you have our, our input from today's meeting, bring it back and let's get a decision made on it. Any other comments?
Yeah, just one comment, you know, Corbett's done some work and suggested some, some things. I don't think that this eliminates the need for, for looking at what Corbett's done. Because I think you're right, Paul. We want to be inviting and, and provide a safe place for our citizens and our guests. And so I think there's a potential that the place that's identified over time could be overrun. And so we may need a secondary place. And so I think we need to be looking and planning towards outgrowing that.
Good point. Thank you. Any other comments?
Paul, this is Wayne.
Yes, Wayne, go ahead.
You need to make some consideration too for construction vehicles that may be parked up there. I was up there a couple of weeks ago and there was a, a truck with probably a 30-foot trailer pulled in generally to where you're talking about. So just as you think about, think through those things, give some consideration to those kinds of encounters and how to best address construction workers who might be up there as well.
Good point, Wayne. Thank you. So Greg, you got that?
I've got it, Paul. I heard.
Okay, thank you, Sherry. Okay, good, good, good. Okay, next, audit of city computers. I think the only thing we have here is maybe we can read Councilmember Pratt's comment here. Let me see if I can find that. Because he was kind of tasked with doing that and he had a follow-up. I hear you go. Okay. He said, "I had a very productive meeting with this company. It's with TownCloud is the company. They provide agenda management, management software, but are also getting into city website software. The pricing they gave me was $3,000 per year for the agenda software and a 20% discount if we sign up for three years. The agenda software allows us to create agendas, display them, and then use the agenda to create the minutes. It does not, as I thought it did, automatically published to the state, but they do output to PDF which can then be uploaded to the state website. The website software is also interesting." I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong section. Okay, audit of city computers. Here we go. "I have with the help of all our employees completed step one, which is an inventory of computer systems within the city. I will next be working on getting operating system information patch plus backup status and evaluating other software connections." So that's where we're at on the city system. Any, any comments? Any other information that anybody has on that?
Not on the, I just had questions on TownCloud, but I don't think we're ready for that discussion.
Okay, okay. All right. Now, number four, Planning Commission Chairman Francis. Okay, okay. All right, now, uh number four, Planning Commission, uh Chairman Francis Wayne. You want to talk about city building height ordinance and gates on public and private roads, please?
Yes, just uh briefly, uh on the first one, the city building height. Ordinance that uh a recommendation has gone to the city council. Uh from the Planning Commission, there was a unanimous uh. Uh recommendation made. Uh we spent hours, literally hours on. Trying to formulate what we felt was the best uh. A good definition that the city could use that would remove ambiguity. Uh such as we have with our current ordinance. Um it's um probably a little bit more technical in some aspects. Uh we've had uh several, several engineers look at that as well as architects and. Um they've, they have felt comfortable with the uh, with the wording that has been crafted. Um and understand it. Um and it is pretty specific. There's not a lot of room for. There isn't any room that we can see uh as far as ambiguity in the way that it's worded. Uh it's possible that somebody will come up, but with the way around it and will. When that if and when that happens, we'll maybe have to further address it, but uh we feel good about uh. The recommendation that has been made to you. So. I think uh it's on the agenda for discussion tonight, not for a vote, but for further discussion amongst yourselves. Uh in this work session. Um secondly, on the gates on public and private roads. Um just to refresh your, uh your memories on that, the Planning Commission separated. Uh the issue of gates on public roads versus gates on private roads. To include uh approval of private roads uh in the uh. Uh Summit Creek uh development, uh which at the present time is the only development that's approved. Or the only development that is restricted from having functioning gates. Um so those are, a recommendation was made by the Planning Commission to approve. Uh private roads in uh, in the city, including Summit Creek Development. As well as uh gates on those private roads. Um and those would be determined through the process of uh. Uh preliminary and final plats. Uh we're not saying that they can have them where, or that a developer can have them wherever they want. But uh to come to a, a meeting of the minds between the city and the developers to. Where those might be located and placed. But that, the recommendation that the Planning Commission made, and again, that was a unanimous recommendation to you all. And a separate, uh we, we would have to change uh an ordinance uh to accommodate that if. That is the decision of the city council to uh, to adopt that and move forward with it. Uh second, we, having to do with uh functioning gates on a public road. We recommended against that uh as they exist on. Um. Summit Creek Road right now. And I think uh there's gonna be some further discussion tonight about that. We um, if, let me, we had a meeting today with Summit Creek on some uh road matters. And uh they are anxious to get the uh, the first part of this resolved with the. Uh private roads and functioning gates. Uh they're waiting on some of their development for that uh, for the city council to make a decision on that matter. Uh because it has an, it has a potential effect of, of their development um. Considerations in the future. So. Um. Anyway, uh and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. I think those two things can be considered separately. When the time comes. Um but that's all up to uh city council to, to decide on that. But again, those, that was an unanimous uh recommendation as well. Planning Commission was of. Of one mind on those recommendations to you all.
Okay, thank you, Wayne. And uh before we get to public comments on this, any, any council comments, thoughts?
I, I listened to all of, well, most all of Wayne's Planning Commission meetings regarding this and. They, they took a lot of time and thought uh talking about it. Um. I, I agree that the council needs to move quickly and, and get a decision made so they can uh. So they aren't delayed. Actually, it would be nice if we acted quicker than we are. So I would hope this would be on a, uh, an agenda soon. Uh for the private gates especially, so that they can get going on that. But that's, that's all I'll say.
Thanks, Doral. Bob or Carrie? May, maybe the co- oh, go ahead, Bob.
Uh there's a, there's a lot in, in Wayne's report there. I guess I'd like to uh kind of go back to the building heights if we could, Wayne. Yes. Do you remind why you chose not to? Call it a three-dimensional building envelope?
Uh let me, let me turn that over to Ted. Um we did have a discussion about that and talked about it. And he can maybe speak more clearly to that than, than I.
And, and I think, well, part of the reason is when we, when you start talking kind of a three-dimensional or a, a. I don't know if I'd call it three-dimensional projected plane, if you will. Um the, I think part of the challenge is the. Still provides or gives, I think, a little bit of ambiguity on how you're going to measure from that projected plane or what you might call a three D. Um. Um. Envelope, if you will. It, it, when we looked at that, it was, it was a. And, and we, we did projected this different ways, even, even looking at, you know, with computers, stuff like that. And it still creates some difficulty in how you measure it. Where if you have a, a more of a linear approach, I think it eliminates a lot of that. Ambiguity, ambiguity in the measurement of it. And it gives a more clear line to, to determine your height, one. And secondly, being a designer, um that just adds more complications to something that doesn't need to be that complicated. When you're designing. Um because now you're trying to figure out how you project a three D plane. To measure roof height from, whereas if you have linear points, it's easy to show on the plan. And easy to define if you're picking the highest and the lowest draw line and nothing can exceed that. Uh much easier to show that on a plan and easier to design it too. So it was just, just to, because then even if you project a three D envelope. Um you have still got some, leave some interpretation where someone might measure out of a three D envelope versus a line.
Thank you. That. And so then when I look at the, the different samples that are there. I um. I personally get a little bit confused. It took me a while to beyond uh the one. Um I don't know what it's called. Um. It has the people on it. Um. It took me a while to figure out that one of your dotted lines corresponded to the lowest. Uh. I guess it's called, it, it's calling it the, the grade or the, the lowest natural point. I'm sorry, the lowest natural point. Um and, and I'm sure that it even does that. So, so does, does that allow? Then at the low end of this. Um of this diagram for the structure to be higher by. Can, could I interpret?
So you're, I think, Bob, you're cutting out there a little bit as I, maybe to my, my issue. I know when we've been there yet, kind of keep that close, but. If I understand it, can you build higher when you're talking about the lowest natural point? Um really is talking about the lowest natural or lowest finished grade point. And that has to fit at that. So let me step back. The whole. I think premise or one of the premises behind this is to promote people to build with the slopes that we live in. And the idea is that at the lowest natural point, whether it be the natural point or even they can go finish grade, whichever is lower. Um they can't go thirty-five feet beyond that point. Now, if they're building up a slope, this creates a sloped line. Right? Because you're taking the high on one side, the low on the other, creating a sloped line. The roof can't go, the highest point of the roof can't go beyond or above that line. So they technically could build a roof that steps up the slope, but that's okay, cause we're promoting them to build the slope. But in any case, along that line, they can't go above thirty-five feet with their highest roof ridge. And I did run this by, we have some people that write code in our company. Um and I did run this by those folks to, to. See, you know, see, because these are people who write code, interpret code, architects and, and code writers basically and. And I ran this by them and to see if they, you know, if it made sense to them and. They, they picked out pretty quickly and, and thought it made sense. And that was the only recommendation, re- recommendation I had at that time was just do an exhibit. Now, there may be, need to be a little bit of cleanup on the exhibit, but. That's kind of the general idea is that we're promoting them to build with the slope and at no point go beyond thirty-five feet.
Okay.
Of that line.
Yeah, as I look at the uh, the drawing and I, I was thinking maybe uh. Might be good to try to share that if I could. Um. No, that's, that's not what I want to share. Um. Let me see if I can, this one right here. Can you, can you see what I've shared?
Not yet.
Did I, did I do that?
Yeah, I don't see anything.
Let's see if I can.
It might require some permission from, oh, there we go.
Now I just got to get to where it's, where what I'm looking at. Okay. So that, that's what, this is the one that, that concerns me. So as, as I look at the downhill side. Uh and the, and the, where the arrow is, it's pointing from the lowest natural point. That point to the eve straight above that, is that thirty-five feet? Or is that a thirty-five foot maximum?
The, there's, the measurement is not to the eve now. It's to the top of the roof line, the ridge or the top of the roof.
So, does this house only have one ridge line or does it have two or three?
Um, actually, it could have four, two on each side and two in the middle. But at no, at no point can that exceed thirty-five feet from that. Natural lowest point line or the reference line to the, to the highest ridge.
So, this is short, Bob, if you were to draw a line, see versus lowest natural point.
Yes, sir.
Were measured straight up there to thirty-five feet. The roof cannot exceed that uh height. So anywhere along that natural grade. Reference line, no point along there, could you, would you, could you exceed thirty-five feet as measured straight up from that line?
And so would it be helpful for people like me? If we put what we have on the extreme right side of this that says not to exceed thirty-five feet? If we did a duplicate of that on the left-hand side of the screen, that uh, that shows that that. Lower uh roof peak. Uh can't be higher than thirty-five feet?
I, I think that'd be a good clarification. It might even, might even be worth looking at, just taking that natural. Grade reference line and projecting it up thirty-five feet, cause it would fall the same slope, right?
Yeah, so I guess, and Corbett kind of helped me with this, but the, the dotted line showing the thirty-five feet maximum that goes. Just underneath the uh, the top of the chimney. Since that is flat, that to me visualizes that anywhere along that plane is acceptable. Where reality, it's at an angle and not flat.
Yeah.
Yeah, the flat measurement is just to differentiate the thirty-five feet at that level, but it is a. It's a plane that would go up parallel to the natural grade reference line.
Yeah, and I think, Bobby, you're right. It may be worth showing a parallel line thirty-five feet above the natural grade reference line.
You, you've got the, the natural grade line in gray at the bottom. What if we did similar thing at the top?
Yeah, yeah, and I would agree.
Okay.
And we're actually talking about, what you would see on that then is essentially a parallelogram. That parallels that natural grade reference line.
That's correct. Yes, that, that's, that's what I was thinking, Severin, so um. So that, that's, that's what uh my thought was there. So.
We can easily add that.
So, so then, then one of the other things, I'm sorry, Wayne, Wayne talked about a lot of things there. Um. The um. Gates on private roads. I think we need to move forward with that with, without any hesitation. I don't see any problem with it. I personally am vacillating back and forth with functional gates on the public roads. And um, and I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm really torn there. And I'll, I'll get comfortable with one aspect of it and then I'll discover something else in this and I get uncomfortable with that and. And so um I vacillate between yes and no uh frequently. And this afternoon I was doing some more research and got some information from uh Summit Creek folks and read over that. Made some phone calls. There is a public, there is a, a gate on a public road apparently in Taylorsville. Uh but it is for, as I understood, if I could, if I understood this gentleman correctly, it, it was designed to. Help. Uh mitigate traffic accidents that they were having at this particular point. And so they, they uh put it there, but that's the only one in the state of Utah that I've been able to found, I'm, to, to find. I'm sure that there's others. Um and, and so I, I just uh, I'm really confused over uh looking at the data that. Jody provided us with um. Uh letters that are dated back in uh two thousand fourteen from Summit Creek saying that. They wanted the gates to be welded open. Um that we have the, is it the Mountain Villa overlay? That says there are, that there can be no functional gates. Um and so it's, it's a, it's a very confusing. One of the things that concerns me most is that we have residents that have bought property, have built homes. Um believing that they have um. That they're gonna be in a gated community. And, and I, I really struggle with the concept that. Uh if I'm correct here and if I'm wrong, please, please correct me, but we are still. Uh advertising. Um a gated community when it is by city ordinances today. It is not lawful. And I, I think that that's, that's a, a, a problem. Um and I would like to see that corrected somehow. I, I don't. I, I'm, I'm a fearful that if we keep going down this path and what we're going to end up with is a situation where. Uh the developers are trying to make the city the bad people in this. When in reality, if the developer wasn't advertising um a gated community, it wouldn't be a problem.
Bob, I really appreciate your comments. Um. I have. A dozen points that it, that it, at some. Point in time, I'd like to go over with the council about gates on public, on these specific gates on this public road. It's as you said, uh. I am very uncomfortable with changing the rules when people. Going into that community and buying properties the way they saw it with a gate. I, I would be very disappointed. In our council, if we change that rule now, I, I think that's very unfair to the people who have. Purchased lots and built their homes and then we change it. That's, that's, it's almost offensive to me that we would consider that. On the other hand, I never want a gate on a public road. But there is a reason that we should, no matter what we do with the final decision, we should grandfather. These two gates that we have sat on for years now. But, and I have, I have all these reasons that I do want to go over and I don't want to do it now because I want. I want the vote on this to be. As you have done, studied before. Everyone on the council just says, no, we can't have a gate on the public road. It's our city and we get to make the rules and the rules for these particular gates. Are a little different. Well, they're way different to me because we've dragged this out for multiple years now. So. But, but, but we do need to make. Make a good decision on this and, and not hurt those residents that depend on those gates more than I do. And their reasons for wanting them are important more than my reasons of not wanting a gate on a public road.
I, I, I agree with that and, and I think, you know, we, we got a letter, um. Stating some proposals and some tests. I'm okay with doing a test, but I don't think that. Um. Some of the criteria, criteria in my mind is being met in those, by those. Uh, tests. Um, and, and in my study today, I became, I got a little bit firmer on what some of the criteria is and. And one of the criteria is, I think that there needs to be cameras on both gates. That, uh. Are accessible. Uh, the video is accessible at the city offices. And I think that there needs to be the ability for an override. That city employees could implement. On the functionality of those greats, gates under, uh, defined criteria. And, um. And, and in my talk with two or three, uh. People today that, uh, install and maintain gates. Um, they, they have the same opinion that I have and that is, is that gates are mechanical and mechanical things fail. And we can't. Uh, you, you, you can't guarantee that they're not going to fail. And that, uh, the, the thing that I did learn is that. Gates are expensive to maintain and that there are always problems with them. And so I think that we have to have, uh, some criteria to deal with the natural. Uh, mechanical. Results of gates. And if I've said anything wrong, please.
I, I thought you were done, Bob, sorry.
That's okay. I was just saying, if I've said anything that was incorrect, I, uh. Be corrected because I don't, it continued on a path that's correct.
Go ahead, Kerry.
Similar thought. Yeah, I think we all have some similar thoughts on, uh, on gates and. You know, recognizing the past history of what, where we've been and yet also being considerate of those residents that are, that are there now. Um, one thing that I have been trying to investigate and I'm still looking, there must be a reason why there aren't any cities in the entire state that have gates on public property. So I was. Trying to see if there's a state statute against that for safety reasons, or if it's just happenstance that nobody has one. Um, there are plenty of gates to be found on private roads, so that, that doesn't seem to be an issue. Um, it's just that if we are going to, uh, change our ordinance to allow private roads. Um, so that's where I'm at on that is still, um, investigating and still looking to see, um, if there is a reason. Why nobody has them on, on public roads. As far as that, uh, as the, um, height of buildings, I appreciate, uh. You showing us that drawing Ted, that was, that was very helpful to visually see. I would like that, um, top line to be parallel so that it. It shows the slope going up. I think that's an important factor because, um. Some residents, it, it's easy to, uh, misinterpret where those, where the line is when you just visually look at something from the street. But if it's drawn out like that and people can start seeing, this is how this line, um, compares to the slope of the land. Then maybe it doesn't seem so, um, out of compliance.
Okay, thanks Kerry. Uh, my comments are similar. Um, I, I think that, I think all of us are on board with saying that, uh, I think we're all, we've all got a, a healthy appetite to change the ordinance to allow for gates on. On private roads. And to allow, allow for private roads. Um, and so it sounds like we would need to modify or change the, uh, mountain overlay, I think is what it's called zone. To allow for that, um, and I don't think there's really any resistance, uh, to, to that issue. Um, so we probably ought to get that decided as soon as we can. I don't know if that would be next council meeting. Uh, that we, we could get that on the agenda and make that decision because I don't, I don't sense any resistance there. Um, on the, the, uh, the gates on. Um. On Summit Creek Drive, I, I'm not going to rehash what it, what the others have said because I agree with that. The only thing. I would add that maybe as new as I, I do get the sense that I was not on the council when all of that first happened, so I don't have any institutional knowledge to share of what happened. But since getting on the council, this issue has come up for many years and what I recall. Is that there was always an expectation by those who lived up above Summit Creek. That one day there would be a, another access route for them and, and, and so they feel like they have, uh, as vested of interest in Summit Creek Drive as anybody does, including those that live on it. And, and so I'd like to hear from them. If they don't care. Uh, I don't know that I care, but if they do care, I'd like to get their opinion because I think there are also stakeholders in this. Um, that maybe we haven't heard from, and I think that may be why the proposal was made that why don't we shut the gates? Uh, for a couple of months and, and then have a discussion. And if nobody comes forward at that point. And has a contrary position that has a, a feeling that they want the, the, the gates opened. Then, you know, that, that would certainly affect my decision making on that, but I think that's why that was proposed. Uh, because thus far, for the last few months, we've heard from the residents of, of Summit Creek who have uniformly. Um, asked that, that, that the gates on Summit Creek Drive be allowed to close. Uh, and we haven't heard from those who maybe in the past have voiced an opinion contrary to that. And it may be because the gates are open, so they don't feel like they have a need to. And I'd hate to have them, that decision made and then we get this kind of wall of complaints. Um, so let's maybe close it. Invite them to, to voice their opinions and if there's really no contrary opinion, then. Make our decisions based on the fact that it doesn't seem like anyone has a contrary opinion to it. Um, and then I think there was some, yeah, go ahead.
We, when we had, uh, planning commission had our public hearing. There was, uh, as I recall, only one, but there was one resident. That voiced her opinion that the gate should remain open. That lives up above Summit Creek.
Okay, so just one.
And, and on the planning commission itself. When we went over all of this, we had that. Particular discussion as well because. Some of us, such as me. Live right above Summit Creek and we use that. Thoroughfare offer.
Okay. Okay, so yeah, it'd be good to get that, that opinion voiced in, uh, a council meeting before it's, uh, the decision is made as well. And this might invite that.
Uh, and I think, uh, Paul, your, your thought there about closing them for a while. Get people's attention and we would have, uh, more representative. Uh, input on likes and dislikes of them being functional. So I think that's a good approach to take.
And then there was, I, I, when I talked to the mayor, uh, before this meeting. Um, she gave me some information and Jody may have emailed this out, but I, I haven't seen any of my emails from. The last twenty four hours, so maybe in, in that batch, but she was mentioning that I think Jody had found. The council minutes where, where it, the, it was approved. And it was specifically said that the gates were not to be closed. Um, and then somehow it went from there and that's where it gets really hazy, is it goes from the council approving. Uh. Uh, the, the, the monuments, I guess, but without clothes to, uh, gates that were closed. On the final plat, I believe, and what happened between point A and point B, that's where everybody is confused. The, the members of the council at the time apparently were saying, yeah, that's what we remember. We remember that we specifically said no closed gates. And then all of a sudden their gates are there and they're closed. And I don't, I don't think that Summit, Summit Creek has shown us time and time again. That they are to be trusted and, and so I refused a, a, at this point to not trust them. I think that they in good faith have believed. That they've had permission all along, um, until, well, until recently to, to close those gates. And so. We've got a, 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 an issue where you've got both sides that feel like, hey, we're in the right here. And, and that they're probably both right and wrong, um. Uh, to certain extent, and so I would like to have more public input on that issue so that we can finally and, and. Uh, completely put this issue to bed, make a decision now it's fully informed. And, and do that. So, but I think that can wait a little bit. So maybe, maybe what I'm thinking is, let's get the, 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 um. Authorization for private roads. Let's change it so that gates, closed gates can be on private roads. Uh, at least get the proposal to the council at our next meeting. Uh, so we can vote on that. And then let's, uh, maybe look at closing the gates on Summit Creek for several months. And, and then hold, um, some public hearings to see if there's anyone who comes forward based on that. Uh, and then we can make that decision at that point. Uh, on the, the thirty five foot, on the ordinance for the building height. Uh, I love the discussion. I don't have any additional, um, input on that. Uh, Bob, I appreciate you being so thorough on that. That's a great suggestion on the parallel lines. I completely agree. So. There's my two cents. Any public comments now on, on those issues?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I, I have, uh, this is David Stones. I have a comment on it if, if that's all right. Um. So just from a, just from a resident perspective, but to be honest, I have no issues with. Gates on private roads and to be honest, I have no issues with them on. Public roads either. If that can enhance the safety of the city, I'm all for it. Um, regarding the Summit Creek gates. They were closed for a period of time. My only issue with that is that. Um, and you know, Bob plows as well, probably more up that way than I do. As long as in the winter, if, if, if it is changed to where they're, they're allowed to be closed. Um, in the winter, or at least when there are storms. To have them open, obviously, um, that would be, I think, critical. Uh, so we can plow that, that road. But just in general, to be honest, I wouldn't even mind gates, um. And, you know, for the main roads of Woodland Hills, that's just my personal opinion. Uh, with, with cameras and closed at certain times, I think it would enhance the safety of our community. So that's just my, my opinion and, uh, the gates at Summit Creek were closed before and I didn't have a problem with it then. The, they opened when you drove up to them. So. Anyway, that's just the only comments I want to make.
All right, thanks Dave. And, and so, uh, Bu- Bucky and Steve, can you guys note that, that? That, I think that's an important feature that in the wintertime, we've got to have, because sometimes. The, the snowplows aren't going to be able to slow down and stop fast enough for those gates to open on their own. So if they can be open. Uh, so some component of that. So I'm sorry, who, who was next?
Oh, Paul, this is, this is Steve. We'll, we'll, we'll make note of that. So.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Appreciate it.
Well, that, that's one of the advantages of having the, uh, there being a bypass capability at the city offices. In the winter, they could be functional. But when a storm comes, then the city officials could open them up. And, uh, thereby we, you know, we could eliminate the concerns that Dave talked about. And, and, you know, and what, not even just only open them up, but there may be an occasion where we want them to be closed. Uh, for, for whatever reason. And so, um, I, I think that having a, an override with criteria. For the city to, uh. To, 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 to be able to, to do an override is, is critical.
Okay, and that's, that's a great point. That's one other issue that the ma- mayor raises. When we did have the fire. Regardless of who, whose fault it was, there was a real problem in getting through those gates, uh, when the fire was, was, was happening, just starting. And so if we had something like that at the city, then somebody could hit that button and open them up without trying to find. Who's the, who's the guy with the red button, uh, in the development with Summit Creek who can open that? They could just go and say, hey, this is an emergency situation, open it. So I like that, Bob. Um, I saw a note that there was somebody who's next in line. Jody, who was that?
Me.
All right, you're up.
It was, it was me. Okay, so I wasn't going to say anything about this, but, um, I can see that. Uh. One question that I would have is, because I do feel like being at the top of Summit Creek. That if the gates are closed, it is an added measure of security for me because, you know, people are. Are not, maybe not necessarily, or maybe they would, I don't know. We have all kinds of people driving up here, so who knows? Um, how they came up here. Um. But on the other hand, um, I also worry about, um. How, how will they make, decide who can open the gates or not? Is everybody going to have to have a reader on their car? Um, so that people that are from other places. Um. Have to have some kind of code to buzz in. How, how, um, how efficient is it in, in an emergency when? Uh, an ambulance is trying to get down to the patient hospital or trying to get. Up here from Salem because our ambulances, I mean, there's always. Um, times when something. Out of the ordinary happens. And people's lives are in the balance. So, um, I, I personally, you know, I kind of like the idea of the gates, but then I find all these other issues and I didn't buy. Thinking that there would be gates. That would, um. Cause problems. I even worry about in wintertime, even if there's not a storm, my granddaughter sliding into the gates. Because she's, and all the other inexperienced drivers that we have who live up here. So I don't know, that's just a few more questions to throw into the pot. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, there's a hand raised, but I can't, let's see, is that?
That's Steve. Steve, yeah.
Paul, if, if you'll grant me a few minutes, I think, just to address a couple of the questions that.
You bet.
Caught up, right? So. So Jan, as it relates to your daughter, um. In, in coming down, there is a heated pad before the gates. Uh, so, so there isn't a, a need for a snowplow issue there. We, we do agree with the city that, you know, the, the snow removal is an important issue. We want to make sure that we're, we're going to tackle that and I think we would do that. In the case of an emergency. Um, there, there is a siren, um. Uh, sensor on it. Ben can probably speak better than I can to this, so that it does allow for that gate to stay open.
And when we hit that. When we hit the Yelp on the fire truck, it permanently stays open until somebody goes and physically has to reset it.
Yeah, so thanks, Chris. I, I appreciate that. There, there you go from the volunteer fire department. And then, you know, you know, speaking up. So, you know, we appreciate that. We've, and Jan, we've also, um. Said that we, those need to be tested on a regular basis to make sure that the gate actually is functioning the way it should for an emergency. So. That's, this is a couple of things that didn't highlight all of the items that you had mentioned, but. Um, yeah, just wanted to make sure that we had addressed those concerns, so.
I'll throw right be, I'll throw right behind Steve's comments there. Um. We have a very good track record with how these gates are. How they run. Every winter they've been. Staying open and, and that's not been an issue. Um, and I have, it's been a long time since anything about the gates has failed. So the track record on the, on those two gates, in my opinion, has been, uh, been really good. Thanks, Doral.
I'm not sure how to raise my hand, Paul, but this is Ben, if I could comment.
Hey, Ben, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. So, uh.
real quick on Jan's comments. Thank you. Those are all really valid points. The one that one thing to clarify as far as who's able to get through the gates, they are accessible to anyone. There is a basically, for lack of a better term, there's a metal detector system in the asphalt. When a vehicle pulls up, any vehicle, it recognizes that vehicle and the gates open. So there's no clicker required or special code. Those particular gates on Summit Creek just open for any vehicle. Just in general, general comments related to gates and private roads. I'm really encouraged by the comments made that private roads and gates on private roads seem to be moving forward and and we're we're grateful for that and and hope that to Doral and Bob's comment that that goes through as quick as possible. And then as far as the gates on public roads, in particular Summit Creek. Yeah, we're just anxious to work with you, continue to work with you on this, you know, this test period and and firming up whatever those criteria need to be. And we're available anytime to to work through that and get that solidified so we can move forward with that test period. So thank you.
Great. Thanks, Ben.
Just a side point in in that in my research, if I understood it correctly, there is now a capability on the gates that when a nine one one call comes in to the location, that the gates at that point would be open, would stay open until till closed. And so then that would not, if if that feature was added, and if I understand it correctly, then that would eliminate any delays of emergency vehicles slowing down for the gates to open or the chirp or whatever. Needing to to be at access. So I think that would be an interesting feature to consider.
And if they could consider that even on the private ones, it would be so advantageous.
Abs- absolutely. And that that, you know, any and all gates on a nine one call would would open and stay open until manually shut or whatever the process is.
It could matter. Yep.
Great, great points. Any other comments from the from from anybody?
I had, this is Carrie. I just wanted to ask Wayne, in changing the overlay, does that go to the planning commission first and then to the council? Or is this something that the council can just change? What I'm speaking specifically with is is the private roads with gates.
Yes, it should come to the planning commission first and then a recommendation to the city council. But we that is that's almost inherent in what's already been done. So our recommendation to you, if if the council proceeds with private gates, private roads and private gates, that has already been addressed in public hearing. And it would be a matter then of changing our ordinance. We would not have to have a new public hearing on that particular matter.
The way you feel like the the like you guys have done what what work you need to do preliminarily to the city council making a decision on the private road gate issue.
That's correct. Yes.
And and we would have to have a a public hearing as well, just specific to this, because it seems to me we've been talking about just in general. Both gates on public and private, would we not have to have one, at least on the council's side, a public hearing just with regards to private roads and private gates?
I do not believe you would need to. Your public hearings have addressed the general topic. And we broke them up into a to separate recommendations, but the topic has been the same.
All right. That's what I just wanted to know, because it seems like we've we've it seems like we're always talking to them at about them at the same in the same conversations. And so I wasn't sure if we had separated it enough for the public to recognize that that it's two separate issues.
Good point. Thanks, Carrie.
Yeah.
Any other comments from public?
Yeah, can I just make a comment or it's more of a question? Ben, thank you for addressing how the gates open. And with the siren, does that include the siren in Woodland Hills for emergency exit for us to leave the city? Would the gates then remain open because so many of us use Summit Creek Drive during the fire?
Yeah, that's a good good question. And Craig Northrup had been looking into that as well. And if I remember correctly, he was able to determine that there is a way functionally to make that work where this if the city siren is is activated. And I can't I'm not, I can't remember if it's hardwire or if it's radio frequency receiver that then would activate the gate. I'd have to dig into that a little bit more, but I'm pretty sure he said that there was a way to do that.
Thank you. Ben, share anything else on that?
Ben, if I can ask you guys too, if you when we do this testing, I'd be interested in knowing if a motorcycle or an ATV activates the gate to open it. If there's sufficient metal in those those vehicles to open the gate would I'm sorry?
Is it yours, Wayne? We won't open for yours.
It's the metal in Wayne's head that sets it off.
That's a good, that's a good question, Wayne. And I'm I'm just curious, from the city's perspective, would you prefer that they not open for motorcycles? Like dirt bikes? Or are you thinking for like street motorcycles?
Any, any motorcycle. I mean, those are approved to use throughout the city as well as ATVs. So we, I think the city would want them to open with using those those vehicles.
Gotcha.
I I know that they're side by side. I've done that personally in mine. I I think they also need, they either need to work for a bicycle or there needs to be some way for a cyclist. Because we're getting more and more cyclists coming up and down and getting going to to Paul's earlier comment about being neighbor friendly. Somehow I think it'd be good to have some sort of access for cyclists.
I agree with that one. Because cyclists will, they come up and down both of our roads. You know, we're we're known for a lot of training because of the hills. And so I think that would be important. We'd hate for a cyclist who's who's going at a significant speed down the hill to not be able to get through.
Bob, I think I think the idea on our side is to the extent that the gates are approved, we we would put a bike path or something off to the or around it so they would not have to worry about the gate.
Yeah, and and I think I I'm sure you're doing that. And when I'm talking about the the city having some sort of override in my research. It's I think they said that that there's this device you can put on them where you can have control from fifteen miles away from the gate, something like that. Also, they made a comment when I talked to all of them. I told them they they asked how old the gate. And I said, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of two thousand twelve, they were installed. And they all said, oh, those are old gates. Just so you know.
Yeah. Well, the good thing is that they weren't that old. So.
That's good.
Okay, really quickly, I forgot to read Dave Pratt's comments. So he said on on gates on public roads, he said, I have read the latest proposal from Summit Creek. My concern is that in all the research we have done on this issue, no city allows gates on public roads. As long as Summit Creek is a public road, I feel it's wrong to have any kind of closed gate on it. Their arguments in favor are based on personal conversations where we, the city, have legislation that prohibits it. So I don't feel we should budge on this issue. On the gates on private roads, he said, this is a different matter for me than public roads. I believe that we should be generally supportive of property rights. Summit Creek owns the property and we are and are developing it. As long as we have the right protections in place, easements rights to the road in emergencies, rights to the roads to visit, I feel we should support their plans for private roads. So those are council members Pratt's comments on it. Any other public comment on these issues?
You have Mark Solvayne that would like to.
Mark.
Yeah, just
Go ahead, Mark.
Can you hear me? Okay, one quick question. You talked a lot about gate, you know, gate actuation. Is there a fail safe that would open those gates if there's a power outage?
Yeah, so they're set up where if the power goes out, there's a backup battery inside each activator cabinet. And when the power goes out, I believe it's fifteen seconds after power goes out, the the batteries open the gates and then the gates stay open until power is restored.
Kind of figured just wanted to, you know, make sure that everybody was aware of that.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, thanks for all the the public comments on that these critical issues. Sure helps to solidify it in my mind. Okay, so now we're going to move on to number seven, Public Works update. Corbin, are you on? I don't know that I saw him.
Yeah, he's here.
Hey, Corbin, take it away.
The water line, they've got all of the main line done. Everywhere except Valley View and West Lakeview. We set the pressure reducing vault or the PRV vault today on Lakeview. And they will continue from that PRV all the way over to Woodland Hills Drive. Once they're done there, they'll go over to Valley View and do Valley View between Woodland Hills Drive and Oak. They've still got Woodland Ridge Circle to do. They started on the services on East Spring Friday. They've got services left between Oak Ridge Circle and old partway up, I think about Vista is where the other crew got down to. And now the now the one crew that's coming up from the bottom is working from Oak Ridge Circle up to Vista. And then they'll do the cul-de-sacs on the west side of town. While the second crew is over on East Spring and then they'll jump up to Broad Hollow. Then both crews will will chase them down West Spring and West Lakeview. So it's going well. They're they're firming up the dates for asphalt today. I haven't heard back. We got a meeting with them tomorrow. I haven't heard back yet on what they've found out, but we'll find out tomorrow.
Right.
Corbin, could you reiterate? Which roads in this area still need house connected? Houses connected?
The cul-de-sacs on the west side of town to complete. They're working on Oak Ridge Circle right now.
Okay.
And then East Spring and Broad Hollow. Everything else is, everything else should be done.
Okay.
Great. Hey, Corbin, I don't know if this is for you or for Ted, but we had had a discussion a couple of months ago about potentially increasing or getting some more funds from that loan, zero percent interest loan to cover some of the additional damage done to the roads. Do we know, is that is that moving along or do we need to push that anywhere?
Yeah, oh, good question. So last Thursday, we went to the Division of Breaking Water Board. They held emergency board meeting last Thursday in which they authorized the additional funding. So we got the same, so our request was for four hundred and ten thousand. They gave us the same distribution that we got in the original loan. So there is forty one thousand dollars of that, that is grant money, and then three sixty nine, that is the zero percent interest.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much on that, Ted. Is is there anything, were we able to piggyback on with the current contractor? Is that, did that die? Or do we have to go through the process of rebidding?
No, we've we've piggybacked with the current contractor and and that's kind of what Corbin was mentioning. They're working right now. We we notified him yesterday or today, and he's working on getting their asphalt crews scheduled with that in mind. So we're just working on now. We still have some paperwork to do to close or to get the money in place on the city side. That's something we're gonna have to work on with Jody and Chris and and those guys to get that paperwork finished. We're still trying to solidify that, but but it has been authorized.
Great. Ted, you're making me so happy. I'm gonna name the 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 second half of my driveway the Ted Mickelson honorary driveway after you for for doing all this.
Mickelson Way.
Mickelson Way, right there.
Be careful. I don't want all the citizens going and spitting on your driveway.
I also have, I have a little bit of of update too, that possibly could be with the new round of stimulus money that we're having. That should be distributed to us by the first or second week of June. And the state has said, I mean, be one of the authorizations to use that money, which is different than CARES is for projects. So we could use it for our water system if we would want. I was talking with some of our state leaders this last week, and the state is considering matching. So whatever we use of our our monies, our new monies, then American Rescue Act money that may match that same amount. My my ears open and talking about it quite a bit to see if we would qualify because we we don't get as much as some other cities. So they may consider it just a really a small amount. But it would be a huge benefit to us. So if we choose to use that money, and we do have to vote on it as a council, but if we choose to use it for our project, then there's some there's a possibility of matching funds.
Oh, that's great. Great news, Carrie. Thank you. So so my my thought is since Corbin gets blamed for things that aren't his fault, can we give him credit for for this stuff that isn't his doing? Isn't that fair, Corbin?
He's shaking his head no.
Well, you're still gonna get blamed for stuff that's not your fault.
Probably doing this too.
Yeah. Okay, Corbin, anything else?
Can I can I ask Corbin a question or a favor regarding the the water project and Vancon hauling the dirt up the easement road? Can Vancon or the city, please, please come and sweep the road and water it down? It is a, it is an absolute mess up here and the weather is going to be nice and this weekend, and I'd really like to open my windows. Somebody came and sprayed the road once. But it's now gone from deep forest down Eagle's Nest. It's a mess.
All right. Corbin, you got you got that?
What?
Well, I think that the resolution is Bob is gonna go with you with a hose and spray down the the roads, right, Bob?
Actually, John Wallace has volunteered to do that.
So sounds like we should communicate that with Vancon to say, hey, look, we need to have some cleanup up there. I don't know who the person is that that would communicate that to Vancon, but seems like they've done a fairly decent job down where I am. Periodically, maybe once every week and a half coming by and sweeping. They haven't, I haven't seen him spray anything, but but if it's that big of a mess up there, maybe we could just communicate that up the line to them. They might have, they might just not know.
I'll bring it up in our meeting tomorrow. They've got a street sweep and they've got a water truck in town.
Great. Thanks, Corbin. Alright, Corbin, anything else on the public works?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I I all I saw your email on the contract. I'll start working on that. I'll try to get something to you tomorrow. Okay, update on city council assignments, Doral.
Yes, we have a huge announcement. So is Craig North up on the line with us? I want to, I want to have him tell you about it because it means a lot to our city and it was a some effort to get to this point. If Craig isn't there, I'll start.
No, he's here.
I hear him.
Yeah, I'm here. Where are you?
I'm in a much better place. I'm in my comfort of my chair. So so council and citizens, go ahead, Craig.
Well, we talked a little bit ago about that grant that we put in for for the eighty five thousand. Thanks to the help from DAX from DNR. We were able to secure the loan or the grant.
That's wonderful.
So we got that. So we're gonna be able to do a lot of fuel reduction projects in town. Will be some participation from some of the residents, but this can go a long ways. And then after a two year pause, we can we can do this again. And so we'll try to manage this one and get the most out of it. Um, and so we'll try to manage this one and get the most out of it. And it will stand a better chance of procuring it again. So.
So have we picked, so have we picked a chipper day then? And can, and can residents start putting their stuff out that?
Yeah, we meet Thursday, set the date for chipper day.
Go ahead, Greg.
We, what are we looking at? We haven't, we haven't decided?
We we meet on Thursday. Or Saturday. We will have a chip day. Uh, we'll probably have a spring chipper day and we'll also have a fall, probably dumpster chipper. So that'll be kind of, the dates will be coming. I'll try to get it out as soon as we know on Thursday, the the actual date.
Great. Thanks, Craig. That's awesome.
Paul, can I go back?
Yeah.
Doral, you first. I don't want to interrupt.
This is tied with with that topic. The the grant was applied for and won and and to me, it's a huge deal. We had already put in our budget and it's still there, the twenty thousand for chipping. That is required to stay there now to turn that twenty into almost ninety thousand. So um, this, this isn't, this is really money well spent in in the chipping plans we have for this season as well as one more. So thanks to Craig and Dax for for doing that.
Alright, great, thanks. Corbin, go ahead.
Um, back to, I guess, part of chipping also, but back to uh, to Public Works. We've been, Carrie and Ted got uh, got the watershed ops. You guys are probably familiar with that or remember that. Watershed Ops that is that is already approved through the NRCS to do the planning and environmental for debris flow coming out of Broad Hollow. Now, that's where the avalanche came out back in two thousand and seven. There's been, um, I mean, Ted's company has done a ton of work on this. And I've tried to contact the property owners that would be around that are adjacent to the city property up there where the tank, tanks are. In that, the the property owners are aware that there is a high risk. Um, I I'm not sure that they're totally aware of it, but uh, they're aware that there is a risk associated with it with Broad Hollow and a debris flow and and as well as avalanche that comes comes out of this. This is the same avalanche or the same gully that we that we've talked about trying to do some kind of a deflection berm or a berm that would facilitate uh, tuners being able to build. All that's, all that is part of the same project. Uh, I sent, today I sent a couple of maps to all of you. Um, that are just some ideas of that. But there, there is ab, there is from, and Ted, if if, is Ted still on? If Ted, you correct me if I'm wrong, but there is, there is no way that we can see of not being able to utilize one hundred percent of that city property up there to do some kind of mitigation. That that being said, in order for that to happen, um, we've got to commit that property to mitigation. Along with that goes the fact that there's a lot of work that needs to be done. Any work that gets done prior to approval of the of the funding doesn't get counted towards the funding. So we're trying to be careful on what we do so that we don't step over ourselves in the future once that is approved. Um, that being said, there's a lot that goes into the the mitigation. The design that was done back in two thousand and seven by I G E S included some kind of a berm that would capture the drainage that comes out on top of Burgers' Property and and channel that over to that future basin. That being said, that's tough to do because of the elevation. Um, if we did it, it would take some, it would take some substantial amount of fill to make it work. There's different ways of making that work. Instead of dealing with the debris, we filter the debris first, so all we're dealing with is water. Water's a lot easier to handle than debris. Um, but it would, it would require, if we did something like that, it would require access to that basin or that filter, whatever you want to call it, that would allow us to to clean it in the future. Um, that would facilitate a redesign of the trail that would get the trail off of Tuners' Property as well as Burgers' Property or further away from Tuners' and Burgers' Properties that would help do all of this together and and more or less it's trying to kill four or five birds with the same stone. I just, I, so I sent that that stuff, those maps to you today just to hopefully get you to start thinking about it. Um, I'd like some time with each of you. If I could sit down with you and and kind of go over this, I've already done it with Bob. But if we could, you know, maybe work something out to where we can I don't know, at least get the ideas out there. So you're thinking about it and you're thinking about the future. Um, from what we see, there's no way that we can avoid some kind of a basin on the city property. If that's the case, we've got to do something with the road to access the tanks. Does that road go around that basin or around the berm that creates that basin? And so these are just things that I want you to think about. Also in that, with the with the the chipping that uh, Chief Northrup's got approved, the mound of trees, it's right up there by the tanks that we've talked about before, and we've already given approval to to get those trees, you know, out of there. It would be helpful to start putting volunteers together. I know Jeff and Sherry talked about being willing to help cut those trees, pile them up, so that once we do get a chipper in town, we can go up there and and uh, get that mess out of the way so that we can start the work on the berm that needs to be done as not just part of Tuners' uh, issue with mitigation, but also with the ultimate design of the of the basin and and the mitigation work that Ted and Carrie have been working on for a long time.
So Corbin, you you said that there was that we that we'd need a lot of dirt to do this. So does that mean that the dirt that we have there is insufficient to do that? Is the dirt that Van Con is is uh, putting up there, is that helpful for this? Just kind of give us some sort of idea of of how much dirt do we have too much of or how much dirt do we need?
Well, I mean, as far as needing dirt, I I don't think that's completely accurate. I've told people, I don't need your dirt, but I can take it. Uh, there's room to take the dirt, but I think there's I mean, you've all seen the pile of dirt that we hauled up there from the mitigation that was done on on Eagle Nest across from from Ottley's and and Wallace's. That dirt that's up there is stacked quite steep. If we were to lessen the slope on the west side of that pile, there's probably enough dirt up there to build the berm that we're talking about building. So I don't need anybody's dirt, but if somebody wants to pay the city to take their dirt, I would be more than willing to take more dirt.
So so it's not gonna get in our way?
No.
Well, and it's also important to note, um, Corbin, that the reason that we are hauling that dirt up there is it's a significant savings to the city because otherwise the current water project, they would have to haul that away. And for every truckload, I can't remember how many hundreds of dollars you told me it was, but that would have to be added to the contract. So by them being able to deposit that within our city boundaries, it's saving us a significant amount of money. So that's the main reason that we're having that money, that that uh, um, that dirt dumped there.
I mean, Ted, I don't know that there's a, any one main reason. I mean, I don't know if you remember, but with the mitigation that we did already, we hauled almost five thousand loads of dirt up there. And that five thousand truckloads saved us roughly half a million bucks. Instead of hauling, hauling it up there, we're we're dealing with the same thing on the waterman. We either pay Van Con to haul it out of town or we give them a place in town.
And do we have enough, do we have enough uh, location for them to do that at every phase or is it just this first phase?
Uh, I'm not willing to commit. I'm just gonna say for this first phase. I don't know. I don't know what those numbers look like.
Alright, I just think it's important for our residents to know, because if it's a long term, I think we do need to consider that for next time because they've there's been trucks going almost nonstop for seven or eight months now, and I think it's important that we consider that if we don't need the dirt. Um, but again, it's, we know it's a budgetary issue with the project overall, so I I'd like to see that as we go forward.
Well, and Van Con has not hauled one hundred percent of it up there. There was, there were times in the winter where they couldn't get up there. There have been residents that have wanted dirt, that have that have talked to Van Con and Van Con's more than willing to take dirt to your house if that's what you want. As long as, you know, I mean, they've got a contract that they'll uh, you know, they'll have you sign so that if it damages your driveway, they're not responsible to fix it. So they're, they're, they're trying to save us money by keeping the dirt in town. Trying to participate in that by giving them someplace to dump it. But if they can dump it in somebody's backyard right next to the project, that saves them time and it saves us money.
Okay, thanks.
Alright. Thanks, Corbin. Okay, um, let's see. Doral, was there anything else you had on Public Safety Committee or Parks and Trails Rec Committee?
You're on mute, Doral. Oh, I was thinking you to to know in. Thank you, Paul. Um, just a couple of, just a couple of things. Uh, we want to mention the Fire Expo that is coming up May twenty second. Uh, that will be a good, a good event at the city center. Um, along with that, I want to mention Dark Sky Community, um.
Doral, before you move on, have you, do you guys have a flyer or anything on the expo yet that I can put out?
We don't yet. Um, Beth Wildings, the head of that generally and uh, and that will be for forthcoming. Thank you. Um, let's see, what else?
Doral, I I might mention that in addition to the um, Fire Expo, the the week leading up to that is also the spring cleanup. And we'll have a a dumpster at the city center. We'll have a a tap of this way bin, so it'll be a nice kind of community week to bring a lot of events together.
So that will be the, that that will be, Craig, uh, Greg, that will be the week prior?
Yes.
The seventeenth to the twenty, to the twenty second.
And I believe you, yes, I believe you. I think Carrie, you already have a flyer for that one.
Okay, so city cleanup is the seventeenth to the twenty second and then the ending with the Fire Expo on the twenty second. Alright, and that, who would have the the flyer on the cleanup?
You've already got it.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, I do. I remember you you sent it to me. I remember. Sorry.
And and uh, lastly, to just make the council aware that the the Parks and Trails Committee have a lot, good information from uh, the Dark Sky peoples. And they're gonna share the materials they get, they've gotten from that with the public at both the expo as well as I hope on Woodland Hills Day. So um, there's some, there's some good stuff they're collecting to educate the public so they know why we're uh, interested in Dark Sky Community. Uh, the process. Thanks, Paul.
Great. Thanks, Doral. Okay, uh, now it's to me, Public Works Committee. I don't have anything on snow removal. Uh, Mark, are you still on? Did you have, do we have anything that we wanted to ri- bring up on Public Works overall or otherwise?
Uh, not really. I mean, it's been pretty well covered right now. The the biggest priority, of course, is the water project. Uh, we are uh, meeting next week as a committee. Uh, main topic of discussion will be, uh, we do have some excess, uh, I won't say excess, we have some road funds that uh, haven't been spent because we'll be using uh, water fund money to do the projects that we were going to do. And so we are uh, looking at
Prioritizing?
Prioritizing those funds. Uh, Wayne did mention earlier that we met with Summit Creek today. We did kind of get their input as what they want to do with some of their projects. Uh, we hope to be able to incorporate some of their uh, ideas into our priority list. Uh, that being said, there are other priorities that we'll be looking at as well. So we hope to have a little better handle on after next week's Wednesday and hopefully soon we should have something to present to the council.
Great. Thanks, Mark. Uh, Carrie, anything on communication or emergency management?
Um, yes. So um, first of all, the committee, the Communication Committee is kind of reorganizing and we have a new deputy recorder who has agreed to be on that committee to help us with whatever we need from the city side. So we're really excited about that. As far as emergency management goes, um, the the mayor has asked me to um, to fill the role of Emergency Management Director for the city. Um, during this last legislative session, um, it was the, a a, and a bill was passed that every city has to have a emergency management manager. And it doesn't have to be a paid um, employee. Some larger cities have one, um, but for us, that probably wouldn't work. Um, I have, because of another responsibility I have, I have had to really go to a lot of training about emergency management and I think that the um, because of that, the mayor has felt that that would be uh, a good way for for us to go forward. Um, I am a member of the Utah Emergency Management Association and I've been training with them for a few months now because of this other responsibility. And so um, we will be putting together a committee which will, of course, have a fire chief or whoever he has designated as well as law enforcement and some citizens who will serve on our emergency management committee.
Great. That's gonna be really great for our city too. Okay, anything else, Carrie?
Uh, not at this time.
Alright, Bob, volunteer projects and community events.
Alright, uh, last time we met, I I forced in the uh, community events that uh, that have been scheduled, so I won't repeat those. Um, I did pick up today from uh, the fire chief the plans uh, for landscaping around the uh, city offices. And so I'll be getting with the Trails Committee and we'll be looking at that and uh, uh, plan on uh, uh, getting that taken care of sometime this summer. And that's all I have.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, Councilman Pratt's not here. Anyone from the Planning Commission or Finance Committee that wants to give us a report, anything we haven't discussed yet?
I think the Planning Commission is good, the discussions we've had.
Okay, thanks, Wayne. Uh, anyone from the Finance Committee want to make a comment? Okay, um, Mayor Prey uh, is, uh, like we all know, not here. Um, she did mention that we do have two wonderful new imp- uh, city employees. Uh, Jody, do you want to introduce them? Give us a little bit of information about the the role that they will play.
Sure.
I didn't give her your heads up, sorry.
Oh, no, that's fine. Uh, so the city has gone ahead and hired two employees. One will be filling um, Patty Kel's role as she is uh, getting ready to retire. Uh, she has agreed to um, stay on and help out uh, with some of the financial um, reports that need to be turned into the state for our taxes and and help uh, train uh, Lori Thomas who's filling uh, the treasurer position on uh, those reports. And so she'll be in and out a little bit, probably for the next couple of months um, as we transition over. Uh, we've also hired a deputy recorder. The deputy recorder is helping um, with uh, going through our building permit packet and looking at it from an outside viewpoint, um, to make it a little bit smoother for those who are wanting to construct homes in the city. Um, she's also working with our Planning Commission and uh, will help doing some posting the agendas and um, getting things with our other uh, committees that we have. Uh, Parks, Trails and Recreation, Public Works and Financial. Um, she's
Marcy?
And that's Marcy Brown. Uh, she's from Salem. Uh, and as Carrie mentioned, she'll also be helping out a little bit um, with the communications team. As you can see, she's got a lot of, she's got a lot of roles and um, they are not full-time, so uh, they need to stay within a a certain number of hours uh, that Chris uh, needs to keep track of and so in order not to have to pay benefits and things like that. So we need to be careful on that. Um, so we've got to watch their time, but you know, it's an added uh, help in the office to hopefully alleviate uh, some of um, hopefully alleviate all of my overtime and any of my volunteer time that I'm having. hopefully alleviate all of my overtime and any of my volunteer time that I'm having to give.
So you're being, um, tasked with getting them up to speed, onboarding them. And so, your time is even more precious than normal.
Uh, yeah, less time is being spent on my duties right now because we are training. Um, and more going through, uh, walking them through things and, and making sure that things are done correctly. So it's, it's, it's a little bit of a learning curve, but we expect that and eventually everyone has to leave and Patty has given us, um, nineteen and a half years. And, uh, we are very grateful to her for doing that.
Yeah, thank you. I was going to say, I hope this isn't the last time this is discussed, uh, before her retirement, but uh, what a great thing that she's doing even now, uh, where she could be fading, uh, driving off into the sunset or riding off into the sunset. Instead, she's staying behind to help fill the slots, uh, while you train. So that's just wonderful. All right, thanks, Jody. Appreciate that. Um.
I would also, Paul, I would also like to publicly thank, uh, Patty for all of her, uh, work in the city. Although she's been an employee for nearly twenty years, she's been, she was a resident here for much longer before that. And, uh, and, and she has had her heart in Woodland Hills and, and, uh, we will, we will miss her. And, uh, I really do appreciate all that she has done.
Yep, thank you.
Paul, I, I need, I, I, can I add two things to my report?
Sure.
Uh, first one is, is that, um, some months ago I was tasked with getting, uh, Randy Larson, see if he would be available to be our consultant on wild animals and, um, and how we deal with those. And he's agreed to that. He's, he's agreed to do that a couple of months ago and I just keep forgetting to tell people. And so, um, as we, uh, look and plan to the future, uh, we, we can task him with doing the research and getting us data on, on how we should deal with those. And secondly, um, I have a group of people that I've, uh, pulled together with, uh, the help of the mayor and Jody and that. And we are looking at, it's, it'll be a committee on commercial development in the city. And we have a meeting hopefully next week with, uh, some people that want to, uh, help us develop our commercial zone.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Uh, the last issue is possible items for upcoming city council agendas. I'd like to suggest that the next, uh, city council meeting, we address the, uh, private roads issue in, uh, Summit Creek and what that means to gates and, and, uh, specifically not just to address, but specifically to vote on, uh, any amendments to, uh, our zoning ordinances that would allow for private roads in, um, Summit Creek and, and then functioning gates on those private roads. They say that right?
No.
Whoever said no, that's, yeah. So that, if we can get that on the agenda so that next time we can actually, uh, maybe make a decision on that issue. It sounds like we're all ready to make that decision. And that the, uh, the, that the Planning Commission has done its work on that as well. Any concerns with that?
No.
Okay. Anything else, Doral?
Paul, before we go on, I just want to thank you for sending the email about the animal shelter. And the, the, the email I received before yours set me off in a little bit of a concern as far as euthanasia of animals. And, and your, your input to us from the animal, animal shelter side was, was very informative. And I, I think you should maybe talk about that for a minute. If, if, if it's appropriate.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Okay, so, um, you assumed that I was being informative, Doral. Um, whoever put that together was being informative.
Your email was informative.
Yeah, I, I, I read it really fast, so I, I don't even know if I'm qualified. You might be more qualified to be to talk about it.
Well, well, just so everyone knows, I received it and I'm assuming all the council received an email from some group that thrashed our animal shelter in Spanish Fork and claimed that the way they have to euthanize certain animals uh, was, was inhuman and inappropriate. And I, I want, I, I'm really glad that we saw the animal shelter side that came through, Paul, where, where it explained, first of all, they don't euthanize very many animals. It's only those that, that are of a special condition or problem. And secondly, the method they use, you know, and I want to save all animals. But let me just state that clearly. My wife's worse than I am. She wants to save them all too. We, we carry spiders outside, if you know what I mean. But, but the point that the animal shelter made is that the, the information that was passed out by this other group uh, was not correct a hundred percent. And the fact is, is that the methods used in our community down at our animal shelter are some of the best that exist. And they are the, the most painless and, and probably proper ways of, of doing this. Um, we get all of our pets, dogs and cats and everything from that particular shelter and have been very lucky with the choice animals we've taken on in our home. But, but they are, they are a good group and they're following proper procedures and, and, uh, I hope your, your email, Paul, gets to everyone that got the prior email that said it's terrible down there. That's, that's what I wanted to say.
Thanks, Doral. And actually I found out that that email from that group went out to virtually all cities. So I think it was a one-size-fits-all, uh, email that went out. Um, which is a little frustrating that they would, that they would have such, you know, throughout such disparaging, um, comments and opinions uh, without saying that party is guilty of it. They just said, well, it's happening in our state, so everybody's guilty of it. Seemed to be the approach they took. So I appreciated, uh, the, the response as well. So thanks for bringing that up, Doral. Um, any other items we want to, to put on the upcoming city council agendas?
Paul, this is Wayne. Can I suggest that you consider the, uh, new billing height ordinance, uh, next meeting as well?
Yes. Does anyone have a concern of putting that on the agenda? I think that that's been, that's gone through many public hearings with the Planning Commission. And we've had a lot of discussion, debate, discussion and debate on, on that as well.
Yeah, I think it needs to, I think we're ready, especially if the, we can kind of update those, um, sketches. I think that would be helpful and then, um, go forward.
Okay, great.
I feel the same, yeah.
Okay, any other issues? Okay, we're only fourteen minutes behind, so it's not too bad. So let's take, are we okay to take, uh, until, right now my clock says seven oh, or eight oh four, come back at eight ten? Okay, I give everybody enough time? Councilmember Paul MacArthur, and again, to reiterate, we've got Councilmember Bob Ottley, Councilmember Carrie Malkovich, Councilmember Doral Keniston here, Councilmember David Pratt is not, he's traveling. And Mayor Wendy Prey is with family tonight. So this is what you got. So let's start with, uh, the pledge, um, uh, Doral, if you could take care of that. And just a reminder for everybody, I think everybody pretty well is muted, but we've got a few that aren't, so let's mute ourselves while, while, uh, Doral leaves us the pledge of allegiance.
Okay, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Doral. Bob, uh, it looks like you've got the invocation.
Our dear Father in Heaven, we are grateful to thee for the many rich blessings that we enjoy. We're grateful for this wonderful community, the environment that we're able to live in, the, uh, wonderful people that we're able to associate with. We pray, Father, that thou will guide us and direct us in this meeting, that we'll be able to make good, sound decisions and that we'll be able to, uh, think of all of those that are, may be involved. This we pray for humbly in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, uh, public comment. Just a reminder that public comments should be two minutes or less. Comments, uh, submitted via email to the city will not be read during the meeting. Will be included with the official record. And I wanted to note that there was an emailed, um, uh, statement by Tennen Fugia that will be added to the official records, but will not be read. Um, so any other public comments? Wow, okay. Um, so no public comments. Uh, let's move to the third part, which is the consent agenda. Um, uh, Jody emailed us the, uh, copies of the minutes from the March twenty-third, two thousand and one city council meeting and the March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one city council budget retreat. Have we all had a chance to review those?
I received a, a request that these be tabled. Am I wrong?
I just saw that as well.
Okay.
Is that right, Jody?
Shaking her head, yes.
Okay. All right, so we'll table those. Uh, partner four, business and discussion. First issue, motorized vehicles on switchback trails. Any discussion, any motions?
I, that we, uh, adopt a process of, uh, seasonal motorized closure of the, uh, uh, switchbacks that would enable the, uh, preservation of that trail.
And aren't we, aren't we tasking the, uh, Parks and Trails Committee to bring us back a proposal? So that would, I would add that to your motion.
Okay, I think on the, on, Bob, on your motion, Jody, tell me if I'm wrong, but I think because we haven't had, uh, an official public hearing on that issue of seasonal closure, but I, I don't think we need to because I think that the mayor has the ability administratively to do that. And before the meeting when she and I talked, she, she mentioned to me that something similar to that she would anticipate doing. So can we maybe change that, Bob, just to say, we're, we're going to ask the mayor to, to, to immediately enact that? And exercise her.
Yeah, so, so let, let me make it in two parts. First part would that, uh, uh, request the mayor to immediately enact a seasonal motorized closure of the trail until, uh, we're able to assess that it's, uh, dry enough and appropriate, uh, conditions for the safe maintenance of the trail. Uh, that does not impact pedestrians. Uh, second would be, uh, tasking the, uh, Parks and Trail Committee to, uh, move forward with providing a recommendation on, uh, some sort of, uh, limiting device or devices that would, uh, prohibit large larger vehicles from going up the trail, um, and that would be removable in case of emergencies.
And I will second those paragraphs.
So I think in our discussion, we actually tasked them with three things, if I remember right. Tell me, Bob, if you're okay with this. Number one, we tasked them with that, with, with saying, you, you, you know, give us a proposal on a location and a, and a barrier type, uh, that would prevent large vehicles. Number two, give us a recommendation on what vehicles should never be allowed up there. And then number three, give us a recommendation on, uh, what was the third one?
Deep forest parking, right?
No, no, it wa, it was, that was a different issue. There was a third.
But, so, so we have three there, right? We have the, uh,
Location and type of, of, of barrier was one.
And what, what not to be. And a time for, no?
I, I had in my notes types, uh, of vehicles, seasonal closures and barrier types and their location. That's what I wrote.
Seasonal is what I was thinking. So we're asking the mayor to do it now, but we were asking them to come back with some kind of a proposal on a regular, uh, um, schedule of, of, you know, what, what should we anticipate when closures would occur? When would they open? What conditions would we look for? That sort of thing. Are you okay with all that, Bob?
Sure.
Okay, you're the men's getting the credit, good or bad?
Stucky.
Okay, so then Doral, you, you, you seconded that.
I will second those same three things, yes.
Okay, any, any additional comment? Okay, if not, let's take a vote. Uh, see, uh, Doral?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Did you say yes, Bob? Okay, uh, Carrie?
Yes.
And, and me, yes. Okay, and then the second one was request for gates on Summit Creek Drive to operate on a modified schedule. So I would, um, yeah, so any, any comments or motions?
I, I'd like to know what the modified schedule is.
I believe that was the one we were proposing, like for two or three months, we allow them to be closed and just see, that allows us to test to see if, uh, those around are, um, going to voice opinions or whatever happens. It just, it would be a, a, a training ground for us.
So, in, in our packet, there was a, uh, a letter uh, that talked about that. Let's see, uh, they, they're proposing that the configuration be tested from April fifteenth to May fifteenth. Uh, with the scheduled check-in on May one to discuss the status. And so what they're looking at here is that, uh, allow the gates, let's see, that's, that's, okay. On the upper or southernmost gate of Summit Hills, Summit Creek Drive be kept open during the hours of seven AM to ten PM and closed during the overnight hours. Operation of the gate during the overnight hours will be as previously discussed with the gates opening, uh, as the, as approach of any vehicle including emergency vehi, vehicles and the town emergency alarm sirens. And then the lower gate, um, would be, um, operated normally, basically twenty-four seven. Um, and they, and we would be looking at, uh, for, for success criteria on this, looking at, um, traffic calming and, uh, basically giving the, the citizens, uh, what they thought they bought.
Bob, who wrote that?
That was, uh, sent to, uh, sent to the mayor and Craig Smith from a Mr. Brent Bateman from Denton, Durham, Jones and Pennergar, PC.
Does this, does this mean that Summit Creek can perform those functions at those hours for a month?
If we agree to it.
I mean, it, it, then they're, they're willing to do those hours. Oh, I, I'm not sure that's not, that's not probably automated. They're going to have to.
Well, I, I, somebody from Summit Creek can, can step in and, and say yea or nay to that. But that's what I think their attorney is, uh, asking us to do. And I, that's kind of what we had agreed, uh, to do. And, uh, you know, that, they define just, uh, uh, a one-month time period. Um, and we may want to, to have it longer than that, but, um,
Or, or reevaluate.
Yeah, uh, and, and I think that we need to, uh, have some sort of, uh, follow-on at the end discussion as to, um, how we think it went, kind of what you were talking about earlier, Paul, where we, uh, try to get some, get citizens feedback both from in Summit Creek and particularly those, uh, above Summit Creek.
I have a question. Um, I don't know if this is to Steve or, or Ben, but, or, or whoever. But, uh, I assume that since we've already passed April fifteenth, we'd want to modify those dates so that you have a complete month. But the other thing is, um, why only have them closed in the evening for a test? Why, why not have them closed in the daytime as well? Is it just, uh, I don't, I, I guess, give me your reasoning why you only want them closed at night and not in the day.
Ben, you wanna take it? You want me to take a stab at it, and then you can correct me? What do you wanna do?
Go ahead, Steve.
So, Carrie, I think, um, a couple of things. Yeah, the, the letter and the request was actually sent early in April. I think it's just now being addressed by the city council, so yeah, the, the dates gave us, uh, some sufficient time there, uh, to, to do that. I think if you wanted to change the date, obviously, that's up, that's up to you. Um, as to the gates being open or closed, Carrie, the, the northernmost gate we're suggesting operates, uh, open and closed, but the southernmost gate would remain open.
All right, that makes, that makes more sense. Yeah.
At least during the day, right? So we, we, we thought that that would, um, somewhat accomplish what we were trying to do with, uh, with the residents there and, and things. It brings a happy medium to, to, to some of the things that we've heard from the city council, the planning commission, and, you know, and residents.
So basically, what we're saying is that you would like to have a month to, um, to operate the gates for it, as on this modified schedule to test it, to see, um, what, if there are concerns, um, et cetera, that the, um, we would call, I will call it the upper gate then would be open in the daytime, closed in the evening, the lower gate would be closed all the time, but with the ability for it to be opened when you drive up.
Yeah, and then we would also have the, I, I think the, uh, emergency services at the-
Yes.
The access, and it kind of goes without saying, but I think that was part of what Bob had read.
Yes.
And Ben, did, did Carrie and I catch that right?
Yes.
Yeah, no, no corrections necessary, Steve.
All right.
Awesome.
This letter was sent to us on April eighth, and it was in our packet today, and so, um, I don't know, uh, how long we may want to, to await to, to begin the test, uh, to communicate to our citizens, but I think we need a week or two to, to do that. And, uh, I would, uh, suggest that we probably look at sixty days versus just thirty. And I, as I read this, it seems like to me that this was, uh, a consensus after a meeting between, uh, the mayor, Craig Smith, and, uh, people from Summit Creek and their attorney. And so, so this is kind of, um, a summary of, of what they probably agreed upon during that meeting.
I, I did read it when it, when, when we first got it, and I just had forgotten some of the details. I still like the thirty days. I would suggest May first to June first, and then with a reevaluation to see if we want to extend it for a second month. I think it's, you know, that that would, that would give them this time period, uh, sooner than later, and then, um, reevaluate it at the, at the end of the first month.
Is, is the first of May sufficient time to communicate to our citizens?
Yes, we can send something out on Everbridge right away.
Today, the twenty-seventh, right? So I'd give us four days, so by, by this weekend.
Yeah.
Okay. So any motions?
I'll make that motion.
Hey, Carrie, before you, before you do that, Ben, can we have the gates operational in four days?
Yeah, I think they're operational, but as far as just kind of, you know, dialing and then making sure all of the backup functions work and all that, it might be a little tight, but I mean, if it's city wants to move, I'll just make it happen.
Well, if you want another date, Ben, we can push it back.
You know, I, I think you, you ought to consider a little bit more flexibility in this than, than the wording of that letter, so that, you know, by mutual agreement, if you wanna change things a little bit, and everybody's agreeable to that, that you can do that without having another letter or another, uh, s- specific time period or, or something, but bu- build, build some mutual understanding into it so that it can be a little more flexible, if you feel that there, it needs to be.
So I, I think, I think that's excellent, Wayne, and I would suggest that the city's point of contact would be the fire chief, and, uh, and maybe Doral, uh, from the city council as the safety guy, and, uh, that they then would consult with, uh, Summit Creek and determine whether or not to, to, uh, modify this for whatever reason that they, uh, agree upon.
And, and I would even suggest that we give them, I like that, Bob, give them authority to extend that additional thirty days. If, if Craig, if, if Chief Northrup and Doral both agree that it be extended another thirty days without having to, um, do it in a formal, um, city council meeting.
Yes, I agree.
So, I, I'd like to, uh, a- and I'm gonna jump in the ditch. I'm gonna make a mo, I'm going to make a motion that we ask Summit Creek to put both gates fully operational as they have always been for thirty days. And if I get a second, then we can vote.
Well, I, I'd like to know why this meeting, they, they discussed about just partial open schedule on the upper gate.
They're trying to be good citizens. This is totally my opinion. They're trying to work with us and give us all kinds of options that, to me, seem very friendly, and very, very conforming to, to what, what the city wants, and, and, and still give their citizens what they want. But my motion stands that both gates be fully operational for thirty days starting May first, as they have been.
And remember, um, Doral, I had made a motion prior to yours that we hadn't voted on yet, and then I had asked that, I had asked Steve what, uh, what he meant by those closures, and I think that, you know, for what they're asking, I think is, is to he, not only to help their residents, but also to continue in the goodwill that they have been, that they've been trying to establish. So, uh, Steve and Ben, would you, I mean, I'm just gonna ask you, would you rather have them both operational right away, or do you, you've obviously talked this over and consider it, would you want to have that upper or south gate open, um, in the daytime, just to start building that trust with the rest of the residents?
Yeah, I, so Doral's right, as far as, you know, we didn't wanna overreach, right, when we were trying to, to, uh, negotiate, you know, this idea of testing the gates, and so it was, okay, let's leave the, the upper gate open just to accommodate, you know, the, the flow of traffic up there with residents. Steve or Bucky might, you know, you guys might wanna chime in on this too. I, if you are proposing to have both gates completely operational twenty-four, seven, I think that would be great.
And, and Carrie, I throw my motion out ahead of yours, because yours is, is moot if this one passes. So I'll, so Paul, it's up to you to-
I, I think we have to take them in, in chronological order, so I think we have to say either, um, Carrie is gonna withdraw her motion, or we would vote on her motion, or see if there's a second. There hasn't been a second yet.
Paul, I think it's motion at all, um, so I'm-
I can, I can remove my motion.
Okay.
Could I also just enter really quick mention, or just suggest that maybe May eighth, just to give me some time to make sure that we get everything dialed in? Is that okay?
Sure, May eighth to June eighth?
Yes. Yeah, I, I think that's good, because I, I think it'd still give us a time period when school is in progress, and so we'll have moms and high school kids going down, up and down the road, and we'll be able to see, uh, and, and hear their effects upon them of the gates operational, so I think that's still a good debt time.
So, so Doral, if I could, then maybe to frame the motion, is it that we will go, start May eighth, go to June seventh, it will be fully functional gates, top and bottom, and it will be, uh, Doral and Chief Northrup are, uh, appointed to represent the city in working with Summit Creek during that one-month period to evaluate, to test, to do whatever, with the idea that, um, they, they are given the authority to extend for another thirty days if they both see fit.
Exactly.
I second it.
Any further discussion? Questions?
So, so Paul, are there only four of us? I, I don't know who would break a tie.
Let's see if there's a tie.
Okay.
So let's take a roll call vote. Um, Doral.
Yes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes, no tie.
And I say yes, no tie.
Wow.
All right, it passes. Thank you, Doral. And thanks, thanks again to Summit Creek for, as always, just, you know, we're trying to all work this out and figure out what's best, and, and I know that there are, um, uh, there's a lot at stake, and there are a lot of emotions, and, and as always, you guys have handled yourselves very well, so thank you.
Also, just to add a note on that, is because this is a test to see how other residents feel, where should we, uh, we don't wanna firestorm on, on Facebook, you know, that can turn nasty real fast. Would it be okay, um, with you, Jody, if we directed those who had, um, comments, um, prior to us talking about it next time, that they could, they could call the city offices and, um, and you and your new deputy just take kind of a tally of how many call in favor and how many call opposed, or if there's any specific concern, so that we kind of have some anecdotal data to, to go by?
I would prefer that they just email me, recorder@woodlandhills-ut.gov, and that we, you know, put in there, subject heading, gates on Summit Creek, we can go from there.
Okay, that would be, I think that would be good, because I think it's important that we start collecting, collecting that notice, so, okay, I will, I, when we, when we-
Good point, Carrie.
When we put this information out, I'll add that.
Okay, Carrie, this is, this is Steve. I- is there a chance that we can take a look at that communication before it goes out? Just to make sure-
Of course.
Miscommunicating anything. We got, we got, we got a shot at this, and and I, I think if we do it right, we'll come to the right result. If we do it wrong, we're gonna come to the wrong result, so.
All right, and if there is something, Steve, that you or Ben want to send me specifically that you would like in that communication, just, uh, send it to me in the next day or so, um, you know, before the weekend, I guess, is, would be great. And then, um, then I can make sure that everything is included, and then I will also then send it back to you for, um, to make sure that it's all right.
Can we pick a date, can we big, pick a date that that communication will go out with plenty of time before the, the eighth?
At least by the first, I would assume.
Okay.
I mean-
Great.
I, I am busy a, a couple of days this week, but other than that-
You're open. Can I, can I, can I pub, can I publicly say congratulations?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Carrie's about to graduate with her master's degree in public administration, which is a huge feat for anybody, but good for her, huh?
Way to go, Carrie.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
Friday.
Wow. Hey, Paul?
Yep.
Congratulations, Carrie.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, can I make a comment here before we leave this? Before we leave this topic, I, I want to commend the planning commission. I listened in detail to their discussions of gates, and they were unanimous on going a different direction than, than I proposed, and I don't, I didn't do any of this out of disrespect for them. I, I think they are using extremely good logic about gates on public roads, and I commend them. I, I am of an oppo- opposing opinion only because I deal as a councilperson with more emotion than they do, which, which, right or wrong, that's the way I feel, and, and I, I really, really think it's important. I, I, I expressed the way I did to the citizens that live on that road, and even those that live anywhere in Woodland Hills, that citizens expect something to remain the same when they buy their property, and, and I don't wanna go back in history and blame city, blame developers. I, I lived through that. I was on the council when all of this happened, and I know that it's a big black hole that no one is right on, and, and I just am standing forth as citizens that live there now and live in our city. And, and I want to again thank the planning commission, because you were correct in no gates on public roads unanimously. I fault you not. That's the right attitude. But I, I, I feel the way I do, and that's why I express it strongly. So thank you, thank you, Wayne.
Thanks, Doral, and just on the record-
Just don't make a habit of it, okay?
Well, and I, I do wanna be clear that, that what we voted on today and agreed to today is simply to allow for a period of time use of the gates to gather information. The, the, the final decision has yet to be made, and this will help us to get information. So, we're, we'll listen to what the planning commission had to say, we'll listen to what we learn in the next twelve, uh, sixty to thirty to sixty days, we'll listen to Doral's emotional rantings, well, no, I'm kidding.
I've got, I've got ten, I've got ten more, Paul, so that's good.
No, we'll listen to all that evidence, and then we'll, we'll hopefully make the right decision. Um, so, appreciate everybody.
This is Bucky Gay. Do you mind if I just make a comment?
Absolutely, Bucky, go ahead.
I, uh, I lived through that with Doral. And it is a black hole, that's, that's well explained, and I've also had countless conversations with almost everybody on the city council, and a lot of people on the planning commission, and I know this is a very difficult situation, and we're just very appreciative of the city and their thoughtfulness, and they're willing to collaborate on this. And we've tried to put our best foot forward with collaborating on this, and we know it's just a test, but we hope to continue to collaborate and, and resolve this the best way we can.
Yeah, well, and the feeling's mutual, Buck. You guys have just been, always been one of, even though there's a uh, sometimes been a difference of opinion on some of these issues, it's always been very civil and with understanding, and let's talk, and let's figure this out and it's reasoned together. And, and I think we've gotten to a good place because of all of that. You guys could have taken a different tact and, and never have, and we've always appreciated that.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, yeah, thank you sincerely. Okay, number five, Doral's favorite, favorite topic. A journey.
Oh, is it, is it a journey? Well, I'll still move unless somebody has something else to say.
I'll second.
All right, we've got it, so let's see, I'll take a real quick roll call vote. Bob?
Yes.
Uh, Carrie?
Yes.
Doral? After I thank our mayor pro tem, yes.
Oh, boy. All right, and I, and I was a solid yes on that too, so thank you, everybody, and good night.